Good morning. Today is Wednesday, the 26th of June. It's nine o'clock. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. This is a meeting of Grimes County Commissioners Court. We're going to open our meeting with an invocation led by Charles Tompkins from the Salem House of Blessings, followed by the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Could you please rise before this?
Let us pray. Father God, we come first acknowledging that you are God, and to know, Father, that you are omniscient and you are all-knowing. Father, we are not all-knowing, so we need you to intervene. Father, we pray your blessings now as you intervene into this court. Father, this court is a type of you, and you are the highest court of all courts. So, Father, we need your wisdom, and we ask your blessings upon these who are presiding, and we ask your blessings upon those who probably have to come before this court to know, "Father, you said everything and nodded you, and you will direct our path." So, we ask your blessings throughout this day in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We're going to open with public comments. If you have a public comment that you'd like to make, we'd ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, and if you would, limit your comments to two minutes or less. Yes, ma'am, please.
Good morning.
My name is Mary Jarvis. I've been here about a few months ago, and the problem that I'm having has not been addressed, okay? And now I have substantial damage to my property, which has been going on for three years. I have put in work orders. I have called. It took a year and a half to get even our road graded. Then the guy, when he graded it before that, he graded it as a slant, okay? The slant does not work because the other side of the county road needs to be dredged out. It's all stopped up. Then there's a guy at the end down there on 30 and 171. We're on the north side. We're not on the beer joint side. We're on the north side, south side, excuse me. And Roden Bridge let him put a culvert in, which is fine for his driveway, but they rerouted it and underneath the county road, and now it's eroding our right-of-way, which we've got to be capping. That hasn't been addressed by Roden Bridge. Then he has stopped up the drainage on, from his culvert to 30, which is always drained. That drainage that goes under the county road is for y'all. There was a gin lot there, and that's where they stored their water a long time ago for the train, because that's an old train track. And it goes under, either goes down to 30, which is not that far, or goes all the way down to Givens Creek down our county road. Well, they were allowed to stop that up because he wants to mow it, I guess, because he was out there mowing it. But the deal is, is all of that stuff has come over. My son had to put cable wires up on the fence because it's pulling my fence down. We can't even put up our good metal fence that he pulled our old bobbard fence up because it stays underwater in our pasture now. And I have addressed this, and I've addressed it, and nobody has come out. I talked for Mr. Walker there. He was supposed to return a phone call yesterday. He did not return a phone call. That's the whole problem with this mess. It's not getting done. My shed is falling in, and it's been there since '80, and the floor's been good. Now it's rotted. I can't even get the stuff in, get in there to get it out without, so my son can squish it and haul it off, because you can't get in there. It's unsound for me. But if I go to redo my yard, the cement blocks that I've got right there by the sidewalk that comes into the house, it has eroded so bad it dropped about, I want to say, an inch and a half. But if I take that inch and a half and redo it, then all that water from that county road comes down to Ushade Drive and into my front, into my door. I am so tired.
Ms. Jarvis, I understand your frustration, but your time is up. Would you give me your address, please?
Yeah, 7980.
7980.
But I do know, I did look up.
What, 7980 what?
County Road 171, and Carlos, but it says Anderson, but Carlos. But I do know what the rules and regulations are for the county commissioners, and Roden Bridge has to answer to y'all. Not him answering to me. Y'all are the one that has to do the adjusting on it. I looked up the laws.
Thank you for your comments.
Here's my stick, yeah, because I can't move without it.
Are there any other comments?
I have an announcement.
Commissioner?
Navasota and Grimes County Chamber of Commerce is holding a legislative update with Representative Ben Lamont. There will be a breakfast at the Roans Prairie Community Center at 8:30 a.m. on July the 1st, and in Navasota, at the Navasota Center at 11:30 for lunch, luncheon. Please join us.
One day.
July 1st.
And my office did generate an agenda, so in the event three commissioners showed up to one location, or if all of them show up, if you want to get feet all day, you will be safe. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? And finally, are there any other public comments? Hearing none, moving to consent agenda items number three, number four, number five, number six. Number three is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Number five, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for May 2019 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026, and that's page five of this agenda. And agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. Commissioners, any comments or questions regarding any of those consent agenda items? Hearing none, is there a motion? I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six as presented.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda item number three, four, five, and six by Commissioner Mallett, second by Commissioner Dublinski. Is there any further comment or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those motions carried. Go to agenda item number seven, Justice of the Peace Precinct 3, Judge Mark Loughlin. Discuss and take possible action regarding mailbox located at 205 Veterans Memorial Drive in Navasota, Texas. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Thank y'all for hearing me this morning. The whole purpose of being here is to try to, one way or another, come up with a secure lockable mailbox at those locations. As it is now, we have two mailboxes that are kind of a community mailbox. One of them is for the extension office, and I think everyone else in our building gets their mail in the other mailbox. About three, four weeks ago, we had an unfortunate incident that I won't go into all the details, but one of my employees had access to the other mail, and they took a gift card out that was supposed to go to the Fair Association for part of the prizes and used it for their personal use. The only way I can come up with to try to prevent that from happening again is for everyone to have their own secure type mailbox. I've done a little research on this. The gang type boxes that you would see in an apartment type complex or that sort of thing are fairly expensive. We're probably looking at $1,500, $1,600 to install one like that. However, I'll submit this to y'all. This is something I come up with through blows, and I've talked to the post office about it. It is acceptable by them. They're about $117 a piece delivered, and we would just have to do a larger mounting system of post or whatever there to accommodate them. Everyone would have their own individual box if they want to have one out there.
When you say everyone, how many is everyone?
There's, there's six entities in our building, is that right?
Commissioner three, four, JP three, four.
The juvenile probation.
Four.
Constable.
Constable. And, I'm sorry, what's the lady's name at the end of the hallway there before you turn around? I'm sorry.
Six. She asked me that, I couldn't count them. I hadn't had enough.
So, there's six of them. And I'm, to be honest with you, I don't know if everyone receives their mail out there. She may or may not. I don't know how many of those have post office boxes. In addition to that box, we also have a post office box that we rent each year. I think that costs us around $68 a year for the rental. It would do away with that expense, and everyone would only have access to their own mail.
If you, if you do away with your P.O. box, then everything's going to have to be changed to deliver to your street address, correct?
Correct.
Is the post office going to go into the sixth box? Will they deliver to the six boxes?
They will if we tell them that that's what we need or what we want. I've talked with the postmaster here and visited with him as recent as yesterday, and...
Here or in Navasota?
Oh, in Navasota, I'm sorry. I know separating ours that would come to the JP's office is not a problem. He said they would do that without any concern. So, this is the only way I can come up with where no one has access to anyone else's mail and we can prevent something like this from happening again. And that's my whole purpose for suggesting this, so... Any questions?
Well, Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Walker, y'all would be involved in this. Do you have any thoughts or comments?
Well, Judge Loughlin and I talked about it, and as usual, like most other times, we don't dictate other elected officials how they receive their mail or where their mail goes to. I suggested to him that he's more than welcome to get a lockbox for his office. Me personally, I don't have to have a lockbox. The problem is, initially in the beginning, we tried to do the suites, but nobody ever caught hold to the idea, so they just all used the 205. The extension also has a drop box in their door. I suggested to them when the problem occurred that they talk to the auditor about possibly a post office box if they feel like people are going to be mailing them gift cards or even sending it the mail to Anderson where there's someone watching it. We do have to, if we go that route of where, the problem is now, like I talked to Judge Loughlin about, he initially wanted lockboxes, I guess, for the whole office, and that was, would mean locking other people out of their mailboxes. In order to, for us to do that, and I don't have a problem with accommodating each office, but we have to go through 911 addressing in order to receive new mailing addresses, and that also puts a burden. You and I talked about how you just ordered all of your stationery.
Stationery and all of that. That's all I get.
So, that means everybody has to change their stationery for it to be separated because the mail is not, they're not going to separate it just by name. They're going to have to have, like you say, some kind of diff, something that differentiates from everybody is, so...
Well, when I spoke with them, not to interrupt you, but when I spoke with them yesterday, they indicated it wouldn't be a problem for them to separate the JP mail out. I don't know.
If you kept it at 205, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, it would keep it there, and they would be able to place it in that receptacle.
If you kept it at the post office?
No, no, they're in front of the office.
Okay, okay. I did talk to 911 addressing because that's usually who issues the addresses. Did you have anything to say about that?
What we could do is you can have, put the suite number, because if you go through, I deal with the addressing office out of Houston. And so, in order to, I want to say, properly deliver your mail, you would need to use a suite number so that only your mail went into your mailbox. Only your mail would go into your mailbox, because if you have used the 205 number, technically all the mail could go into one mailbox. If they sort it, that's just as a common courtesy, but if mail winds up in this mailbox or that mailbox, there's really not much you can complain about because of not putting the suite number or the address.
Judge, could I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
You should appoint a committee of the two commissioners that are in that office to meet with Judge Loughlin and come up with a solution to refer back to the court. Sounds like there's some other ideas that need to be considered. There are probably many ideas that the entire court may want to hear, but because it affects those folks directly, you may want to appoint them as a committee and have them hash out these details before coming back to the court. I assume that Judge Loughlin is just saying prove this money as a budget amendment that wasn't included originally in the budget, and so I think, it sounds to me like they need to solve that and bring it to you guys.
I think, don't you have the money in the budget?
I have the money in my budget to purchase one lockbox. I'll give you the example, yes, I can do that without any adverse issues or anything.
I think what he's just saying, Mr. Foles.
That secures my mail, but it doesn't keep them from opening the box next to it and looking through it and having...
But once it begins.
You know, we may go 20 years and it not have another instant like that. I understand that. I'm not trying to, to be difficult about it, but I think it would be prudent for us to approach it from a standpoint of trying to take some action where it couldn't be repeated.
Yeah, but your, your office is primarily the only office out there that receives funds on a daily basis.
Well, that's true, and it will secure our funds by just putting up the one lockable box, but it doesn't keep them from going through the extension office box next year or, you know. That's why I'm saying that the lockable box for each entity was the only way I could come up in my mind anyway to ensure that would happen.
Well, I mean, the other option is that you have a lockbox for your, your mail, and if you have employees that start going through other boxes, we'll just keep running through until we get honest employees that don't do that.
Well, we're in the process of doing that, sir, but, I mean, it is what it is.
Get H.R. to do a better job of screening. Put the D.A. to work.
I can't, I don't mind you.
I think all of them are pretty involved and engaged right now.
Because there are other elected officials in the office, I would suggest that we check with them and see what route, and then we can bring it either to, back to the auditor. If they want to get a lockbox, that's fine. We can get a bigger hole to put them on and actually get with that.
My sole purpose today was just to bring it to y'all's attention and have it for consideration.
Piggybacking on what the county attorney suggested, I would ask that you conduct a survey of all of the residents at that location, make a determination of what's going to be best for each of those, and then we'll, we'll move in that direction. But I appreciate your concern in trying to help solve this issue.
All right. Once we do that, I'll just get with y'all and let you bring it back to court or whatever. Fair enough.
It sounds fine.
It sounds, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, Grimes County Auditor Mary Nichols considering take action to approve the purchase of financial intelligence software for auditor, treasurer, and human resources department. Can we purchase some intelligence from the county judge's office, too? I'm comfortable making that comment. The rest of you hold your thought. Ms. Nichols?
Judges and commissioners, a couple of weeks ago, I gave y'all a copy of the contract so that you would have time to look it over. Do y'all have any questions regarding that?
It was, there was a review done by our county attorney.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Long before you ever got a copy.
Yep.
I also have Mr. Robert Baird here from Financial Intelligence, and Cliff Tera. They are here for, to answer any questions you may have and to sign the contract. This is going to be their first contract in Texas, and they want to document it. Here he is.
But they are located in Conroe.
Yes.
So, if something goes wrong, we know where you live.
Yes, sir. It's actually...
If you don't mind, Robert, would you come up to the podium?
Yes, sir.
State your name and who you're with.
Good morning. My name's Robert Baird. I'm president of Financial Intelligence, and it's actually our, our third contract for finance in Texas. However, it's our first since my sister company has acquired Hill Country Software. So, it's a very big day for Cliff and myself, and, you know, you only have one first kiss and, and so forth, so we wanted to get some pictures, not kissing anybody on the court.
Thank you.
If y'all want to kiss, we'll take your picture. That's the best route.
No, both totally appreciated. My office, I also have a company called Indigent Healthcare Solutions that has done your Indigent healthcare software through the COG for, for many years. My office has been in Conroe for over 20 years. I'm a Montgomery County resident for over 30 years, so, anyway, we appreciate the opportunity to continue providing service for Grimes County.
So, you're not new to government business?
It's all I've done since, all I've done, I've gone to the judges and commissioners conferences now for 37 years. It's all I've done since I got out of high school.
And I think we actually met at the last one.
Yes, sir, we did.
Credit card, you gave me a metal card.
I did, sir.
Not a credit card, just a metal business card. And Hill Country is who we have been using for a lot of these services, and Hill Country is going sunset, right?
We acquired their assets and their employees in 2016, and in 2016, we began by migrating all of the district and county clerks into our software family. Because their financial product, Hill Country's financial product is so stable, that was chosen to be last, and so now we're undertaking the migration of all the Texas counties that use Hill Country Finance into the F.I. family.
And Mary, the, the cost of the contract, we have that number in our proposed budget?
Yes.
Okay. So, the preliminary budget that the commissioners and myself have been reviewing, those monies are already captured in that proposed budget, okay?
Mr. Foles.
Yes, I'm here.
I was looking at paragraph 2.10, I mean, 2.10, F.I. right to terminate, and I was trying to find, I looked at point eight, it, which talks about necessity of funding appropriation. Where is the out if Grimes County shouldn't like this particular software? I see where they have the right to immediately terminate. Where is the county's right to terminate?
Well, the termination is discussed in paragraph four, and so it has a term on it for two years. We don't typically have an absolute right to terminate, so...
It's based upon performance or funding?
Well, the general principle of rule of contracts is if one party breaches, the other party is excused in performance. So, if they were to breach, then certainly we have the right to get out of it.
Commissioner, if I might, we, our business model is, is we don't charge anyone that price. That it's a, it's a 30-day payment, unlike a lot of software companies that as soon as the contract's signed, a large check is cut on day one. That minimizes the risk of failure because our clients, every time they send a check to my office in Conroe, they're saying, "Okay, Robert, y'all did good for June. Let's see how you do for July." And the second point is there is a funding out provision that counties can't fund in the future fiscal years. So, if it ever became a case where you're so dissatisfied, then you simply wouldn't fund F.I. as a line item in the next year's budget. The data is always yours, and we would convert. But our business model, I really like those checks showing up every 30 days, so, so it's not been a problem. Again, I'm not an attorney.
So, it's a two-year term initially. The initial term is two years. And then, I did have another question on the, some of the problems we've had with others, not you, because you're just now coming before us, but on data migration. We're responsible for, to, at its own cost, for providing you with existing data?
Well, yes, and that is something that Greg has been able to do, and also I've allowed Cliff to download an updated thing. So, it's something that's very easily done, and Cliff has worked for Hill Country for many years, and he's transitioning over to F.I. So, that makes myself and the treasurer and H.R. very comfortable with this company and knowing that Cliff is going to be there throughout it all. And then also, I mean, we've been seeing Robert at our conferences for, ever since I've been here. So, it makes, it makes good sense.
I think some of the problems that you might be alluding to are usually when one company is displacing the other, and there's kind of that competitive thing going on. Because Hill Country is now part of our family, we've actually already written the conversion program that will convert your historical data to our format, and we actually demonstrated that in this room last May. So, as far as converting, it's kind of a non-issue here. And also in the contract, as you may have alluded, there's part in there that says if you would ever not use F.I. in the future, that the data is yours and exactly how we would give the data to you to go on to another vendor.
Yes, I saw that. I just saw that. It, it was our responsibility at, for the cost, and I just wanted to know whether additional costs involved beyond what's, what's in this contract. Do you see any?
Because they're sister companies, there is no cost.
These base contracts, I, when I started the company, I hired the firm of Bickerstaff, Heath, and Delgado because they deal with a lot of county stuff. And so, these standard contracts, if you will, have that, have that in there, and your county attorney did a good job in asking for changes specific to Grimes County, but this is kind, I think what you're reading there is pretty much boilerplate as if we were displacing Netbader or Tyler or somebody else who's not aligned with us.
Okay, okay. I just know that in the past, we've seen that once before, and I just wanted to kind of address it. Mr. Foles, was there any other concerns that you had that...
They, they made the changes that I requested.
Okay, great.
I have a few questions. I noticed in the contract, there's several, several references to nondisclosure, confidentiality, even secrecy, and some remedies and some prohibitions that pertain to those. But this is government, and nothing in government, I mean, we, we operate on a, on a transparency policy, so...
I think that's primarily their specific software that we can't share any of the integral parts of that specific software.
Yeah, so, you're right, Mary. That is specifically to the, what we, what's called the intellectual capital of our, of our software. And we would like that a competitor not walk out with a data backup of our programs, with a competitor not sit down at our screen and understand how we do things to go and create a derivative product. But of course, all of the data that's produced out of there, all the reports that are produced out of there, the contract itself is, is available under the Freedom of Information Request or even Open Records. Just as Microsoft wouldn't want anybody to come in and get the source code for Word or PowerPoint or something like that, it's fairly standard in the intellectual capital business. And then we actually have three patents awarded to us by the U.S. Patent Office specifically for some of the features our software has.
And what about, I noticed in here, there's a reasonable cost for training. Will you actually charge us to come do training?
No, sir. Again, that's probably the boilerplate stuff by Bickerstaff, but, but the... But the fee that we charge is all-inclusive, conversion, training onsite here.
Greg, do you see any problems with them?
I said on a meeting with them last month, I spent some time talking to Mary and some of her colleagues about their thoughts on the software. I think from a feature standpoint, I think it's a great improvement for them. And I don't see anything out of them. I think that John had requested for reasonable. And so there's nothing I see that's out of...
You've done a review of everything that they're going to provide, because anything that's not on this list is going to be extra. So are we covered as far as everything we need from this program?
Yes. I had Janice go through it, and I've gone through it, so...
And we're getting seven licenses or eight?
And we're going to have eight licenses that can be in there at one time. There's 10 of us that use the system. HR is only in there occasionally. So if there's ever a time that HR needs to get in there, and it says that all the licenses are being used at that time, all they have to do is call me, and I'll get out, or one of my girls will get out, so they can get in and do whatever they need to do.
There won't be the ability to any, for anybody to access your program as the county auditor? I mean, like, the treasurer or HR, they would not be able to get in there and make changes to your...
No, no. There, there will be view-only screens, just as we have now. Right now, with Cliff's help, I've gone in, and for each person, I give them whether they can view, or whether they can edit, or create. And the same standard is set in this. And just like for HR, they've got even better security for HR.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions on the contract.
Commissioner Walker?
No, I don't.
Commissioner. Let them treasure any comments or thoughts you want to share, or you're a part of this.
I think it would be a great plus for our office.
HR Director?
I think it would be great.
And how many times do you get three offices to agree on something?
I think we had three before.
I'm pretty sure it was the Donalds. Is there a motion before the court?
Judge, I do have some other comments pertaining to this matter. It's not that I'm opposed to this in any way, per se, but this is a 2020 budget request. And this is something that the court hasn't even had an in-depth discussion with regard to including it in the next year's budget. And I think taking a vote on this today and cherry picking individual, specific items out of budgets to approve before we've had the opportunity to sit down and discuss the 2020 budget is probably premature.
I'd like to make a comment. In May, you already did that by approving rate changes and positions.
Let me ask a question. Do we currently pay Hill Country?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not that the same money that we've been paying Hill Country is in the upcoming budget. If we still stay with Hill Country, we still have to make payments to Hill Country?
Yes.
Correct.
You're changing from Hill, trying to change from Hill Country to FI. So I'm not quite following.
And if I might, we wrote the contract in such a way that we're actually going to begin to install the software in August. However, we would not begin to start charging until your new fiscal years. There would actually be a couple months of free service to get ahead of the curve, because then we've got to go install Concho County, Collinsworth County, who'd be signed as their Collinsworth County, I think. And so we've got other installs. But we would, and the money that you would have paid to FI, we have discounted that out of this, and we wouldn't be double dipping, so to speak.
Hill Country, I got you.
So, so we're not, even though we begin doing the installs, we're actually starting with pre-installation site visits in July, we wouldn't invoice you until your new fiscal year begins. Now, if, and that really is to get a head start on this, if the court chooses not to fund us as a line item in the next budget, then this thing's kind of null and void, and I wasted that, that two months. But you got to have software, and Hill, Hill Country's going away. And so I would hope that it's a line item, but it's a risk that I'm taking that if you don't fund it, then you don't fund it.
Well, I know that we have, we're, I'm going to say that, what my interpretation is, we have to fund our departments to be able to do their jobs and what they do. If Hill Country's going away, they're going away. We're preparing, we're being proactive. I don't see it being any different than us paying already. If, we've never questioned, when Hill Country keeps coming up year after year, they're just transitioning from Hill Country to FI. So I don't know why we would remove their software when we're not removing anybody else's software from their departments. I just would...
It certainly is a unique circumstance, yes, but...
So if you're going to start in July, we're not bound by this contract if the court approves it today?
No, I think it might even, well, I think it's been, I think it's been written to start on October 1st.
Right.
But I wrote an addendum, I think, that says that we're going to start working. I've already bought the plane tickets to have some of my people come in here in July for two days to start getting copies of check stubs and understanding general ledger chart of account numbers and doing all that stuff, so that when we actually come here to begin to install, we've done all the pre-work that we can. But, but you're right, that's kind of what the handshake is. This document doesn't start till October 1st. And you won't be paying, I won't be asking you to fund me for those two months. So you're exactly right. If, if it goes off the rails, or you fail to fund this as a line item, this, this thing's kind of dormant until October 1st.
And Commissioner, your point is valid, what you bring up. I will say that if we wanted, we can, correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, and I have been in the past. But we could approve this contract today. We have a budget workshop this Friday where this is going to be a part of our discussion. And if we found in our discussion Friday that we weren't going to go with this, and we weren't going to have it as a part of the budget, then we're going to give him notice Friday or Monday, July the 1st, that we're not going to use FI. But in the event we approve it today, and we come to resolution on Friday that, yeah, we think the amount and the fee and the company and the contract is going to do business, do the right business for the county, then we can move forward with it. So I appreciate what you're saying.
I still think it's out of order, Judge. It's out of order. Everybody else is waiting to see what's going to be funded in their budget. It's not that I'm opposed to this. I'm opposed to the process by which we're working. This is a 2020 budget request. The court hasn't taken up those issues in a, in a, in a setting where we can have a discussion regarding the entire budget. And I, I just think it's inappropriate to take a vote on this today.
Well, I don't think that's entirely true. We've already approved several things that are going to be in the 2020 budget that we brought before Commissioners' Court prior to the 2020 budget. This is just another...
What are they?
We, we approved positions, like you said.
But that's in our policy.
We approved, what?
That's in our policy.
That's in your policy?
It's in the policy menu.
What's in the policy menu?
On how we approve positions and salary structure grades.
And so do we have how we approve budgets?
Well, the judge sets that.
How we fund departments?
We have a budgets calendar.
To operate? I think that's in statute.
It is, but this is a 2020 request. We funded them for 2019.
It's a request, but statute also states that the auditor has the right to choose the financial software for the county.
Sure, I'm not speeding that.
Okay.
Ms. Tran has it.
Ms. Tran.
And it's going to go in effect October 1st. So y'all will have the workshop Friday. And like the judge said, if y'all think it's not good, then how are we going to operate our offices when Hill Country goes away? And we have not taken on a new software service to pay our bills for our vendors, going to pay our employees? We're just trying to get ahead of the game, do a little labor, and it won't be approved to October 1st. The contract will not take effect to October 1st.
Because the final vote of the budget won't occur until September.
Right.
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue of whether we approve of the software or not. I think it's an issue of whether we can afford it in the budget. Is that fair, Commissioner?
I don't know. Can we?
And I don't think you're going to find another, excuse me, I don't think you're going to find another software that is out of luck in price. That they offer.
Can you tell me what is the difference between what we're paying Hill Country and what this is? And I know this brings more, more information and more tools for us to use as a county, but you know what the difference in price is, Mary?
Well, if I might, when you first started with Hill Country, you paid a lump sum upfront. So you're into an annual maintenance fee, if you will, right, right now, which I think is, you're going to take four grand a year.
Little over four grand a year.
We're going to be charging $2980 a month. I've done this a long time. I am certainly not going to presume on how to make the motions, but in my history, motions have been made that contracts are approved conditionally on the court taking actions in the future. And I'm more than willing to write that into the record, that I'm on notice that if it's, if it doesn't make it through your budget hearings, then this is, this is null and void.
Well, I think we've had fair discussion on this, with that, I'm going to call for a motion. If I don't get a motion and a second, then we will table it and move forward. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the purchase of the Financial Intelligence software for the Auditor, Treasurer, and Human Resource Departments.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion at this time?
It's not appropriate time, but...
Okay. We shall take the vote then. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Record shows four, yea, and one, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, Human Resource Director Lucy Pope, considering to approve the 2019-2020 medical renewal from Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool, see Attachment Number Nine.
Judges and commissioners, you receive the copy of the renewal packet from TAC regarding our renewal for medical and dental. The medical went up 1% and the dental went 3.3%. The life insurance, there is no changes that will take place. The difference from last year's renewal rate to this new rate for medical per employee month is $7.92. Dental, 90 cents each month per employee.
Vision did not change either?
Vision did not change, but we have vision through MVA, not through TAC. And this year, they're going to provide for our employees to be able to, at Open Enrollment Month, which I have it August 13th, be able to make their changes online. So I'm going to be, I have a representative coming in from TAC that will help them make address changes, make any changes that they need to be made right there on the spot.
The difference between this year and last year, you said, last year?
Last year, we didn't have a rate change. It stayed the same because of the, you know, the claims that came through. But this year, it went up 1%.
And this, this, some of the benefits is because we're grandfathered into it.
Right, we're grandfathered into it. That is correct. We've been with TAC for medical for over 20 years, so it really helps.
When I reviewed this with Ms. Pope, I came to the conclusion that, yes, it's a little bit more, what, about eight and a half, less than $9, I think?
Right.
For everybody to maintain the same level of out-of-pocket and deductibles and things of that sort. We can go to another option that brings it down in price for the county, but it does go up in cost to the employees.
Right.
And the increasing cost to the employees is more than the increase in what the annual premium increase would be, so... And I had the privilege of going over this with Lucy one-on-one, so if you have any questions or concerns...
I don't have any. If there are no further questions, then I make the motion to approve the 2019-2020 medical renewal from Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits to remain the same?
Same plan.
The same plan, okay.
Second motion.
And second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Also, Agenda Item Number Ten, considering to approve the Code of Conduct Policy, see Attachment Number Ten. Ms. Pope, would you explain the reasoning behind having this submitted to the court?
Well, Judge, we brought this before Commissioners' Court, you and the Commissioners. We brought it before Commissioners' Court, and you wanted me to pass it out to all the elected officials and department heads and get a feedback on how they felt about putting this in place to fight, try to fight some of these unemployment claims. Because when you're sending these unemployment claims in, I send every policy that I can possibly send in to explain to them why that person was released, or, you know, what the real reason is. They still keep telling us, we have to explain it more clearly in our policy.
They being?
Texas Workforce Commission. They need it explained more clearly. So this policy was brought up by the District Attorney's Office, is that correct, Ms. Inck? And it was sent to me, I did send it to TAC, I sent it to John C., and they both says, you know, the policy is good. The policy is good.
So in other words, if this policy is not in our personnel policy folder, it doesn't matter if the Sheriff Department has theirs, or the District Attorney has the policy in their departments, it needed to be in the overall county's policies.
Right.
Is that what you're seeing?
We went to an H.R. Law, my assistant and I went to an H.R. Law seminar last week. And that speaker told us, your personnel policy that has been approved by the judge and commissioners overrules any, anyone else's policies. It doesn't mean they can't have, these elected officials cannot have their own policies in their office, but ours precedes their, their policy.
So we're not putting this in place so that we're telling elected officials how to run their business?
No, no.
We're putting this in place to protect the county?
Right, from unemployment.
When we have to submit our EEO or...
EEOC or unemployment. If we have a more explanation of why you release that employee.
When, when you, when you bring people onboard, do we have a Code of Conduct Policy or anything that a new hire signs?
We, what we do is we go over different policies with our new employees. We, we, when they go through the orientation, my assistant goes through different policies we feel like they, we really need to, to outline with them. Now, it was brought up from one of the elected officials. If, if this policy is approved, then I should send it out to each employee and have them sign off on it. it out to each employee and have them sign off on it, or have them sign off on acknowledgement that they've read this policy and they know it's enforced.
I think that's a good idea. And then all new employees?
All new employees.
Are to be required to sign a code of conduct upon hire.
Right.
So you're telling me we don't have any of these issues covered in our policy manual?
It might be covered, but all the policies, it can be covered all over the personnel policy. But if it's not in one specific policy, it's what they're telling us, it's...
So look, well, our policy manual was created, and you can correct me, with the assistance of TAC.
Yes, and with John C.'s office.
But weren't they approving the policies that we had in the manual, or not? Or would they?
How far do you want to go back?
Yeah.
So when I, when I began, 14 and a half years ago, there was a personnel policy that had been drafted that had not been signed by the county attorney, and so there were multiple offices or elected officials who refused to abide by it or sign off on it because they felt that it hadn't been approved by the county attorney's office. I love Joe Falco to death, both Joe Falcos, and I'm not sure why it is that he hadn't signed off on it, but I said, maybe I was just dumb. I said, I'll sign off on it. And so I signed off on it, and then all of the elected officials signed off on it. I'd be happy to have the conversation with the person that Lucy had the conversation with, because I disagree that your policy can control what other elected officials do. I think it's beneficial to have that in place, and it's helpful when we're dealing with Workforce Commission, but we know that you can't force an elected official to follow your policy.
Right.
The way you do that is with the leverage of purse, and you say, you ain't getting the dollars that we give out for salaries or increases in salaries if you don't abide by our policy. But I guess to answer your question, I, I got involved in this, this discussion, and I think the, what I have heard from folks is, how far do we have to go to include things that seem to just make common sense? You can't sleep at work.
You can't steal.
Yeah, you, you, right, you shouldn't take paper clips. I mean, how many things do you add in there? And if this is being brought to us because the Workforce Commission is saying that you're going to struggle in these hearings, then I think we do, you know, it's, I said to somebody on the phone yesterday, oftentimes you do what the title company wants you to do, whether it makes sense or not, to close a deal. It's the same thing here, and it's the same thing with grants. If you want the money, you got to do what the strings are required. And so if that's the case here, then I don't know that there's necessarily harm to it. It just is a question of, how far do you go to put things in the policy? How much fluff is in there to make whomever happy, workforce commissioner or otherwise? And I've had the conversation, for their purposes, Workforce Commission's purposes, they define when they don't grant benefits for unemployment, and they say when the person leaves because of misconduct. And the definition of misconduct is mismanagement of a position by action or inaction, neglect that jeopardizes the life or property of another, intentional wrongdoing or malfeasance, intentional violation of law, all of those things, or violation of a policy that's adopted to ensure orderly work or safety of employees. If, if Workforce Commission is telling us, we're not justified in terminating someone unless it's a violation of a policy, a written policy, they're wrong. That's not the statute. That's not the standard. If you let somebody go because of misconduct, as defined herein, they're not entitled to benefits. Now, you may have a dispute with the Workforce Commission. We may end up having to pay some claim because Workforce Commission disagrees with our assertion, but you have to decide at this moment, how often are you going to change, or to what extent are you going to change the policy? Because the people grading our papers are saying it needs to be in the policy. That's a call for you to make. And if it makes sense and it avoids the claims or helps support our claims, I'm okay with it. I mean, just, but having to put in your written policy, you can't sleep at work? I mean, it just seems like, at what point does it end? What type of point does the madness end that you've got to include in written text in your policy? That's, I think that's the struggle that some folks are having with, why does this have to go in there? Not that it's all, any of it's a bad idea that people shouldn't sleep at work. And I'm saying to you, if it helps support our claims and puts us in a better position not to have to pay out improper claims, then maybe you just got to bite the bullet and stick it in policy.
And, and that's what the problem you've been seeing is, we're paying out claims that we possibly shouldn't be paying out.
Right, right.
Now, Ms. Lucy, I did talk with you and ask that, did you send, we asked last week, I think, to send this out to other elected officials?
I did.
And?
I sent it out, and I got a few replies back, and some didn't reply back to me. And I did, you made the suggestion to send to TAC. I sent it to TAC, and I got the reply back from them. They looked the policy over. They thought it was a, a good policy to put in our personnel.
Can I ask a question? Was it Mary Ann or was it somebody else that you?
No, it's Lori Floyd. It's our new representative now. Mary Ann is no longer, she is in the office now. I couldn't get ahold of her. She's on vacation. And so Lori Floyd that took her place was the one that looked it over in, in the office and gave me a reply back this morning.
Okay. The policy, and I left that out of my diatribe, but the policy that we have was presented by TAC. It's been refined over, you know, X number of years. Every time we face an issue where we need to include something, whether the law changes or, you know, people's feelings change or thoughts change, but to my knowledge, TAC has been a participant, specifically Mary Ann has been a participant in every change that we've made and said, yeah, that makes sense. Why it wasn't included in their pattern, in the original one, and why over time it's not included in their pattern now, I haven't a clue. Maybe it's because they believe the same way I do, that misconduct includes more than a violation of written policy. But if, if they've looked at it, they're the folks that are going to cover these claims. I mean, they're the folks that are, they're in the deeper pockets than we are to cover our, you know, the things that we do improperly. And so I, I often look to them as the experts, and if they're saying that it's fine with them, that they don't see any reason not to include it, and we know that it will help support our claims of the Workforce Commission, I get it.
What was your response from the elected officials that had reviewed this?
They all seemed to go with it. The ones that, the replies back.
Have you, have you seen it?
I've seen it. I did respond to it, because we already have some in our policy.
I mean, I've looked at the policy most, if not all, of these issues that are included on the code of conduct. And I'm certainly not necessarily against the code of conduct, but they're already mentioned in the policy.
I can tell you that right now. We went through the policy manual. There's not an insubordination policy. And, and I can tell you, in dealing with the claim right now, I have someone, I'm telling you, committed misconduct. John and I agree that the Texas Workforce Commission is not interpreting the law correctly as lawyers. I 100% agree with that. However, I, but they already approved a claim to someone who was insubordinate, committed a violation of law, and absolutely was flagrantly committed misconduct. And they are going to approve that claim, and we are appealing it right now. And what they said to me is, you don't have a policy that directly deals with that.
So if we can put it in black and white, then we know we have a policy. And if it's a little bit ambiguous or not so clear, or it's gray in other areas of the policy, we're looking for clarity on the code of conduct.
And obviously, it's within every department head and elected officials' purview to enforce it, how they see fit, or they even choose to enforce it.
Sure.
It's a tool, but it's also to protect the taxpayers from paying in my mind, unwarranted unemployment claims. And that's ultimately who I think we all answer to.
Sure.
And I think we should have, I think that we should expect the best of county employees as our, our taxpayers. That's my two cents on it. That's why we can vote.
I think it should be given to every employee and every future employee.
Well, it has to be approved before we start giving it to everyone.
And have them sign it in their personnel folder.
And put it in their personnel.
Then you have the evidence that they have.
And, and we may have those that read and refuse to sign, but we can make that notation. We can put it in their file.
Refuse to sign.
Yes.
And, and, I mean, at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter. It just doesn't sound like what, what policies we have in there. The Texas Workforce Commission is going to interpret whatever they're going to interpret, pay out whatever they're going to pay out, even though, I mean, I can point to explicitly where most of these are in the policy manual.
Agreed, agreed. But if, if we keep getting these overturned on our part, then I guess, John, can we put you to work?
Yes.
You bet. I don't know what overturned is. I relate to...
Well, I mean, if they say, you did not terminate for just cause, we're going to pay unemployment.
Right. We have, we have an appeals process, and that's what we're limited to. But I would say to you that I relate to Andrea, that when I started in my office, I had an employee that I terminated because she failed to get a subpoena out for the victim in a case that was set for trial, as well as a subpoena for an eyewitness to that offense. And I didn't find out until I'm standing in court. And I had, the claim was filed, and I think it may have been approved, and I found myself in an appeals circumstance, I believe. I was on the phone with the Workforce Commission person relating how egregious that circumstance was, and they seemed disinterested about that. Began to describe various other things, including a stack of loose papers that were on top of a filing cabinet that hadn't been filed in weeks. And their ears, I could hear them perk up on the other end of the line. Oh, yeah, that's something. And so essentially, so essentially, that became, in their mind, that was, that rose to the level of misconduct, whereas the other thing may not have. And I think what it really boils down to is, we know, as TAC has warned us over and over, that we ought to document each circumstance where somebody doesn't do what they ought to do, and that they're given opportunities to improve their conduct. I think that's the issue. If it's a one-time event, and you let somebody go for a one-time event, you're going to face this, you know, right in the fence, is it misconduct or is it not?
And I can tell you that this employee was warned and written up for at least one of these violations, and it made no difference.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that...
I'm not, that it made no difference to them whatsoever, because that was made clear to them.
What, what I was going to say was, I think it comes down to the individual person who's handling your case and what they believe misconduct to be. And whether it's the first claim that's filed, whether it's the appeal and the appeals hearing that you get over the phone or otherwise, I think it comes down to the person or the people that you're specifically dealing with. And it is what it is. And if they've represented, if one or more have represented to us, this makes, this helps support your claim. I get the implementation. I get the inclusion in the policy of it. But I'm going to throw you under the bus if I can. She wants to have a knife-throwing contest in this room here later, and then she gets fired for it. Well, that's not in the policy. That won't be included in the thing we're just adding. And so she can't be fired for that. I mean, I'm saying... She may get unemployment. My point is, if workforce, if the Workforce Commission insists that it be in black and white, I mean, there are many, many things that we know in an at-will circumstance that you may want to let someone go for that won't be included in plain, you know, black and white English. I mean, you may say that insubordination or these very, this rule of code of conduct may cover lots of things that aren't covered now, but it doesn't cover everything. I'll shut up.
So what's the discipline measure? What's the discipline for violation of this? It's not indicated on it.
Well, again, the discipline would be up to the elected official or the department head as it's, is now. That's why it gives the department head and the elected freedom of the discipline, but it also gives them a backup in dealing with the Texas Workforce Commission if you fire somebody for that reason. And he's right. I mean, I 100% agree. It's at-will state. You should be able, you should fire anyone for any reason other than a discriminatory conduct.
Right.
However, but if you have it in black and white for them, you're going to, you're going to be costing the taxpayers less money because you're not going to be paying as many claims if you have a policy that specifically fits it.
So, so you're good? Hang on. Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment from my...
Lucy, did you have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
From previous experience with an employee that I fired as well, and going through this process, we also lost. What they explained to me is that everything that's in the policy, you have to do what your disciplinary is, you know, your, your warnings, you have death rate, basically, but for determining. What they suggested to me at that time is that we do have an insubordination clause, but that it, the insubordination clause was vague enough that every one of your write-ups could be listed under that, because if it is extremely laid out again, then you're again having to do it three times. So, you know, the individual, the final straw for the individual that I fired was when he went home on the clock and was taking a nap. And I fired him for that. But all of the other write-ups that had to do with not being, you know, in the place he was supposed to be or not being readily available, those weren't considered the same because he hadn't gone home and taken a nap on the clock three times and been rendered up for that before.
The only thing, the comment I have is, I would feel more comfortable if you could put a line in there saying that it is up to an individual department head or elected official on the punishment phase, because right now what we're doing is asking an employee, myself included, to, to sign something open-ended.
We can, we can add a statement that says failure of compliance to any of these, the individual subject to disciplinary action up to and including discharge or termination. We can put a clause.
Your policy, you can add whatever you want.
I know. But I mean, what I mean, we're stating all of this code of conduct, and then I guess what's, as the Commissioner's asking, what's the red line, you know?
Roden Bridge, I think, Harry.
Harry. Who has a lot of employees.
I'm concerned if we try to write down every possible violation of the code of conduct that can result in a termination, we're creating loopholes for the attorneys to say, well, that particular violation wasn't written in your code of conduct. Because the things that will get you fired from Roden Bridge may be totally different from the attorney's office or the other. You know, there's nothing about mishandling equipment or damaging equipment, things like that, that are covered in there. And I'm not going to give these guys three warnings. They don't get to wreck our equipment three times before we fire them.
I understand.
I'm, I think we're probably rushing into this. And I personally, and my law degrees are worth exactly what I didn't pay for it. I think it's a mistake to overdefine it. I think we keep it as broad as possible and give the department heads, elected officials as much discretion in these matters as we can. You know, I think what John C. read about...
There's nothing in the policy that takes any discretion away from any department head. I think that's a misunderstanding for an elected official. This is a tool to help elected officials and this, and department heads to take, to manage. There's no, there's no discretion taken away from anyone.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
And my concern is that if we go to the extent to write down all of this in the code of conduct, and then something comes up that's not included, that's an immediate out for the employee. That's my concern.
When you say immediate out?
If they go to the Workforce Commission, the appeal being terminated, and say, here's your code of conduct, this specific item that caused that employee to be fired is not listed in there, therefore, we're going to pay them that workforce compensation.
Could you get us a copy of the Texas Workforce Commission's code of conduct or policy on discipline?
Okay.
Judge, as is always the case, we, we pay TAC a significant amount of money. If the court's interested in having the TAC representative to be here, to have this conversation, I don't, I don't know if it changes the trajectory of the appeal that's been mentioned today. So if there's a concern that you want to be sure and take input from all sources, maybe that's the, the tack that you take. You have that available to you?
Sure.
Just to have that out.
workshop word. The department heads and elected officials can speak freely.
Well, we pretty much allow that today, but we didn't advertise it. All right. So is there a motion on 10?
I make the motion, not to approve, but to ask that it be put on a workshop, upcoming workshop at your table today.
Would you put that on the July 10 agenda, which is, I believe, the next Commissioner's Court? Would you contact TAC and see if we?
What if TAC can come in July the 10th? Can you let me get with them? Can you get with, can I get with them first, and then we can send it on the agenda?
Well, yeah, let's, let's, let's try for the 10th of July. And they have more than one or two people. And they have more than one or two people.
Right.
So, all right. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Is that an agreement, commissioners, at the table for now?
Yes.
Get more information, have a workshop. Thank you. All right, agenda item number 11. GIS Environmental Coordinator Kat Lee considering to take action to approve the interlocal agreement between BB COG and Grimes County regarding the use of 911 database and HyperReach. See attachment number 11.
This is an interlocal agreement that, that COG has us, has us, has us do. Whenever we have a new reverse 911 company, so because we approved, because you approved our contract with HyperReach, in order for us to use our 911 database for reverse 911 purposes, BB COG asked us to go into this interlocal agreement with them. I did send it over to John C., and had note issues, and there were a few clericals. And if you'll notice, Tom Wilkinson has also already approved the interlocal agreement for the Presley Council of Governments.
Now, when would the term start? When we approved it initially, or?
I have not. When we, when you approve it, I have not. As of this moment, we do have a contract for reverse 911 purposes, but it is not in use, because I have not sent them our TN database, because we don't have this interlocal agreement in place yet.
So if approved today, then it would be effective, the term would start today?
Yes, ma'am.
For two years? Uh, one year? And then, with no written notice, it shall automatically extend for two years?
That's correct. But it says either party can terminate with 30 days' notice, so we can end it or they can end it.
With that being said, then, I'd like to make a motion, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement between BB COG and Grimes County regarding the use of the 911 database by HyperReach.
Is there a second? One second motion. There's a motion for the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number 12, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly, Commissioner Precinct Two David Dobianski, review and approve the final plat for the Anderson Ridge subdivision. You didn't think we'd ever get to you, did you?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, this is for the consideration for approval for the final plat. You should have a copy. There's actually two separate pages that shows the entire subdivision, proposed subdivision, but what it shows is for Phase One, the section that we're going to start with is shown with dark lines at the top. And then Phase Two is the second section that has the one road that we're building, that's designated Anderson Ridge Lane, and that's on the second page. Harry and I have reviewed this with them, and I know you approved the preliminary plat, I believe, two weeks ago. That's, I was not able to attend that meeting, I was out of town that day, but you guys did approve that, the preliminary plat, with the understanding, of course, that any changes we found were made to the final before we got approved. And they have made all required changes that we noted on the final plat. One thing I would like to point out is, as a part of this, they also require to submit a drainage and a road construction plan, which they have, but Harry and I have reviewed it, and Harry found significant changes on some of the plans that need to be addressed before they can start construction. We are setting up a meeting with the owner, which is, Mr. Skinner is here today, in case you have any questions, and also with his engineers. So we'll be doing that prior to this, starting of construction. And that's for Phase Two. Phase One, there is no construction involved, and that'll allow them to go ahead and start selling lots in Phase One.
And I ask the question of Mr. Skinner, and I guess you and Harry before the meeting, but the road that you're talking about is not in Phase One, is it, right?
It's in Phase Two. Yes, it's not in Phase One.
So there's not, no need to set the construction bond today?
Right.
That's done as part of the final process?
And were there, you said there were changes from preliminary?
I, I don't think there were any significant changes, were there?
Would you all have an agreement with the changes that were made? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But if, if the motion is made, if you need to designate that it's not the entire Anderson Ridge subdivision in Section One, not Section Two?
And if any changes to the construction aren't going to affect the meets and bounds of the, the change in construction, is not going to affect the meets and bounds of this plat?
The only thing that might possibly come out of that would be to condition some drainage movements, which can be done by separate instrument. They don't have to be on the plat.
On the plat, too.
And just a suggestion, again, with how you choose to go is at your discretion, but suggest you consider possibly approving both plats, but with Phase Two conditional on the construction and drainage plan being approved by us.
Just that, you don't ever approve a plat without the bond money being paid.
Yes, yes.
So not just the plan, but the bond money being paid, it's not been calculated to this point, to my knowledge. And so, you can do it on a conditional basis, but I can tell you. I have found in the past that that is problematic with the county clerk's office, because oftentimes they will have laminated the plat, and they will hang it after this meeting, where you all use the word "conditional approval," and they don't know whether to wait for it, whether to put it on their calendar, whether to have somebody tell them it's coming back up. And there have been times where there have been, there was a conditional approval granted, and the clerk thought that meant it was approved. And that plat began to hang over there as though it had been approved like any other plat. So, you, you can do that, but the question then becomes, who tells the clerk when the time is to actually record the plat for Section Two, or hang the plat for Section Two, or the world that Section Two is now in play? Your biggest concern should be, this is my opinion, take it for what it's worth, is that if you don't get the road construction bond, and people buy in reliance upon the belief that the road's going to be constructed, you have what happens in the North End to you all the time, calls where you're to blame for their roads not being constructed. If this somehow is going to be a way, that happens, and I know these developers, and they're prudent folks, that they could die tomorrow. And I'm not wishing ill on J.C. or anybody, but could die tomorrow, and these roads not get constructed, then you, or the people in your chairs, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now, are blaming this body for failing to get that bond up front. And so I just caution you to be careful about that.
And Mr. Fols is correct. That part I did not think about, as far as the construction bond. We don't have that yet, so, again, I would, I would opt to go ahead and go with the first suggestion that he made, that you go ahead and approve Phase One today, at your discretion. And then, once we get the construction bond and the plans approved, we'll bring back for Section Two to have you review and approve that.
I do have a question on the 15 acres that are right in the center. That's going to be the access to that lot 20, is going to be the existing road coming off of highway?
Yes, sir.
And that's not going to serve any of the other lots in there?
No.
Okay. That's the only question that I had on that. If it were serving some of the other lots, I'd be concerned about that. If there's no other questions or comments, I move that we approve the final plat for Anderson Ridge, Section, Phase One.
I accept.
Okay, so I make sure we review and approve the Phase One plat for Anderson Ridge subdivision. Is that your motion?
Yes.
And that is your second, Commissioner?
Yes.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12, as the comment stated by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item number 13, Grimes County Attorney John C. Fols considering to take act, thank you, Mr. Lilly, considering to take action on agreement between Grimes County and the Dispute Resolution Center in Bryan, Texas for alternative dispute resolution services.
Judge, and, oh, I thought it was another conference. You have, I think, the proposed agreement that you received from my office via email. We had a conversation, you and I have had this conversation previously about what terms ought to be in this contract. You'll recall, or you'll see that there's still blank. As to the amount to be paid to the Dispute Resolution Center, I was talking with Commissioner Cox outside before the meeting began. Just to recap, the DRC, I don't know that they deny anybody or reject anybody that wants to go there for a resolution, attempted resolution of their dispute. Oftentimes, it's after litigation has been initiated, it's based upon, I understand, a sliding scale, which is related to your income. I think their max fee, though, is 200 bucks, or something to that effect. And so, those of you that know mediation, or have participated in mediation, it has a pretty high success rate. You allow people to get in the same room, or the same building together, and vent their frustrations to a third party who appears to be an arbiter who can make decisions, but they really can't. And once folks get off their chest, their complaints, oftentimes they can move on to resolving the problems, knowing that it's just going to cost them money and peace of mind to continue on with litigation or their dispute. So, it's a, it's a trick of the mind, is what I call it, that you let people get in a room and vent their frustrations, they can get to resolution pretty darn quick, and maybe put a lot of lawyers in a, in a bad spot, or out of business, if mediation was used more often. But I, I talked with the members, I met with them for lunch. Don't worry, I paid for myself, you didn't pay for anything, and.
Never crossed my mind.
Yeah, I figured it didn't. Anyway, we, noticeably, they did not pay for my lunch either. So, we met, and, so maybe they're frugal. We met, and there, I met with three or four of the members of the board, they indicated they'd take it to the idea to the rest of the board. They emailed me later to indicate that the entire board had approved the idea, and that would be that we would have, we, the person you designate as court, would have representation on their board. It's a nonprofit entity, it's not any pay for the position, and they, they only have a couple of members that are staff members. They've indicated they're, they're in agreement with the proposed written document. They're, they're leaving to the county to decide how much to be contributed. Their, best that I know, best that I can tell, they will be tickled about whatever you decide to pay them, whatever you decide to give them. My understanding, Commissioner Cox asked this question earlier, and I had some vague recollection, but I see now that the district clerk has stopped collecting this fee as of October 2018. I don't know what the county clerk's, whether the county clerk continues to collect the fee or not.
Yes.
Okay. Auditor is saying yes, and Mary's saying yes, both Marys saying yes. A consensus among the Marys. But I don't recall the total amount that's in that account, some.
You and I discussed, it's around 80,000 of dedicated funds, it's already there.
That's my recollection, yeah. And I don't see that.
How much?
I think it's like 90, 95.
Okay. Mary's saying maybe 90, 95. I, I don't recall.
It's about 94.
Or maybe 93.
Somewhere more than a dollar.
Right. I hear 94, from another Mary, so we're. Point, point is, we have funds that need to be used for alternative dispute resolution system of some sort, and we don't have that in Grimes County. And this will allow us to utilize that money for that purpose. I did take a poll of the judges of Grimes County, the JP's, the county judges, the county court law judges, the district judges, about their willingness to utilize the DRC. I know that they're all willing to. Different levels of commitment about how zealously they'll recommend the DRC, which is fine. I don't want to put a judge in a box and say, "You have to do this." But we would like to, for them, we would continue to, we continue to want them to know that we're going to spend money on this out of the county coffers. Folks who have found themselves in civil litigation or criminal cases, who have been obligated to pay this fee, have funded this amount, and now we're going to help fund the DRC. And so we would like the people of Grimes County to get the benefit of what the DRC has to offer. The contract before you indicates that the DRC will do some marketing. Being a nonprofit, we leave to them what that marketing looks like. If we have a member that's on the board, that member can push as hard as they choose to have the marketing available in Grimes County. I would think that we'd want to have something up at the various courthouses or court facilities to let litigants know that the DRC is available to Grimes County folks. That doesn't exist now. All that being said, the number that you pick is somewhat arbitrary. I don't think we want to go crazy with it. I think that we've seen too many abuses of dollars in the past to say that it should be, you know, higher than, let's say, a thousand dollars or so, but it's an arbitrary number. You decide what that is, and you don't have to decide today. Wanted to bring it back before you, after having heard from the board of the DRC, who indicated that they were in agreement with the proposed term.
I have a note to discuss it with the commissioners in our Friday workshop, after our discussion this Monday.
Fine by me. Fine by me.
The fees that are collected can only be used for resolution, dispute resolution.
That is the problem we have. The problem we have, when Commissioner Cox was elected, I, he came to my office, and God knows why, it probably shouldn't have. And I said to him, "Look, there are lots of things in this budget that you, you may want to look at, this is his job, is what you make of it, but here are some items that I've seen, that some of them don't make any sense to me." And ADR was one of them. And he took it upon himself to go and take a look and see what was happening there, and the reality was, we were accumulating funds and we weren't dispersing any. And so the only way we can disperse is with an ADR system. We don't have one unless we intend to get one. It seems to be the best thing we have available, other than maybe another DRC. Montgomery County has a DRC. I'm not suggesting that this is the only mechanism to use, but it is a mechanism to use, and we ought to be using these dollars for the benefit of the people of the county to the degree that we can.
My second part to that was, when we talked about it earlier, we talked about appointing a member that would sit on that nonprofit board, and if I make no mistake, we kind of thought, or hoped it would be you?
I volunteered, yes, ma'am.
You volunteered?
God knows why.
Okay, so do we have to make that decision also today? Name the person that who would?
Sure. If you're going to decide to approve the contract and the amount, I'd say go ahead and make, take that other step. If the judge is saying this discussion about the amount's going to take place in the preliminary budget discussion, you can certainly table both of those issues.
So I've got a question, it just came to mind whenever you were talking about the funding portion of it. And part of the contract under 2A specifies how the county will participate in ongoing funding through the collection of court costs, so to speak, from the district and county courts, as well as the JP courts.
Right. And I want to say that it wasn't clear to me at the time that we originally drafted that both clerks had, or that one clerk had stopped and the other clerk hadn't. We'll make, we'll conform that to whatever the clerks are wanting to do. If the court desires to utilize the DRC for this, maybe it's appropriate to charge the fee. Maybe you just want to liquidate the account. I don't know. It's all directed from you all, this policy, so just tell me what you want to do.
And my thought, as you said, any, any number would be appreciated. The number that came to my head, and I guess this is Friday's discussion, but I was thinking 1,500 dollars a month, that'd be 18,000 dollars a year. 18,000, and we were doing the number of 80. You know, you got five-plus years of money already in the fund, without any additional fees being collected, so.
Right. It's an awkward place to have to back into the number, but, and do so with an arbitrary threshold, but that's kind of where you find yourself. So I'm, I'm more than happy to have you table it for sometime after the preliminary budget discussion. There's no urgency from their perspective. This arose, this arose because Commissioner Cox was combing through. This arose, it arose because Commissioner Cox was combing through the budget. You should warn him against that.
Well, my suggestion is, because I have a note for discussion on this Friday, we've already had one in a vote about approving beforehand, so I would suggest we table it to the July 10 shiree. We can make that an agenda item and we should make a decision probably this Friday or in one of the workshops, be able to move forward. There are consensus amongst the commissioners. Yes? Okay. We're going to table then. Agenda item number 14, County Court of Law Judge Tuck McLean reconsider and take action to adjust the pay rate for county court at law clerk position in accordance with duties and previous salary structure determination for court-related work and make the position a full-time position effective immediately. Judge, you're right on time.
I've been sitting out here.
Okay, well, come on up and have a seat.
I was going to ask my coordinator to do the talking here. What we're trying to do is...
Do you like a donut?
I would love a donut. It doesn't like me back.
Okay.
And maybe we'll be videotaped, my wife will see it and it'll be hell of a day. Y'all were gracious enough recently to approve me for part-time personnel to help with the clerking. There were two issues I had when I wasn't here when it happened and there was some, needed some clarification on the salary level because I got different information from different people. Of course, as part of all this goes on, we started the budget process. And as y'all recall, during the budget process, what I had proposed for my budget for next year was that, I'm currently budgeted still this year for a full-time court reporter. We hadn't been able to fill it. Part of the plan was, I would hire a court reporter who could also do clerk work. That hasn't panned out, not going to pan out. So, what I've asked for in next year's budget was to not do a full-time court reporter, to continue to do contract, independent contractor court reporters next year for the foreseeable, for at least that year. Instead, give me, instead of paying a budgeting for a full-time court reporter, which we'd be talking about 80, $85,000 a year plus load, do a contract court reporter and give me a full-time clerk instead, beginning in October. I'm still hopeful that's what we're going to do, but that kind of put me in a position now when I'm looking at hiring a part-time person, if I hire somebody part-time, I got to tell them, hey, y'all only might be part-time until October. If I get a full-time position, you apply for the full-time position, but a lot of people that are applying for part-time positions aren't in a position where they could take it full-time in October. So, it's making it a lot harder for me to figure out what to do with the part-time position they've given me. And I had, I talked to Judge Vowles and Michelle talked to Judge Vowles about if there was any way, if there was a realistic chance that we were going to be able to do what I asked, not pull back my full-time court reporter position to just contract and then take my clerk full-time and hope that would balance out, the dollar figures balance out if we're about the same. And whether there any chance we could take this position into a full-time position now so I could hire somebody and then not have to tell them, you may or may not have a job in October, or fill a position for a few months. So, that's what we're here talking about. Don't everybody jump in?
Do you have a...
Oh, yeah. And as I mentioned, the other question was, there was some question about the salary level of that part-time position. I don't even think it was clear on the record from what we looked at, whether the position was at 1250 an hour, 14 an hour, or what it was at. And so, I needed some clarification on that.
I think the question was, was it $12 an hour or 1350 an hour?
1350 an hour. And I was under the impression 1350. Now, the clerk position generally has been associated with the courts. I think, well, it's been said at 14 an hour.
Every clerk position that was associated with the courts during the salary structure was moved up to a four level at the lowest 14 dollars an hour. We have previously paid Sandy to come in while I've been gone to conference or whatever. We always paid her 13 while she was just filling in, just answering phones and doing some data entry. So, the 12, we'll just put it quite frankly, we have one application after...
We have four.
Oh, you have four? Good.
For part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time. But your concern, Judge, is that if you hire the part-time now, they might be in the mindset of, I'm okay to be a part-time employee, but I don't want to be a full-time employee.
A lot of them are like college students that are either going to college part-time or even some of them going full-time. You know, I know one of them are looking to go to college, so if we move into a full-time, it's not going to work for them. I actually had a kind of a similar problem around, I turned into DA's office. I hired a lady that worked for me and she was going to college and we understand, I said, look, I can work, manipulate your schedule a little bit to get you, so you can get the classes and stuff, as long as you're going part-time. Well, all of a sudden, she moved into full-time and wanted to come in and work on weekends and stuff. Well, I couldn't do that because of the type of work she did and ended up having to cut her loose because of that. And I don't want to get into that same scenario again where I have somebody who, I spent some time training or something and then it does become full-time and I'm like, it doesn't work.
Lucy, do you know if any of your applicants are interested in full-time even though they're applying for part-time?
There is one. She went on to put her application in, but she'd like to become a full-time.
Okay. And that's not necessarily the one you would hire?
I don't even, I haven't seen these yet. So, I saw the one that was brought up last week.
A college student.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that was a college student, probably be a great part-time employee, excellent part-time employee. I just don't know if she didn't switch over, she's going to college and I don't want to mess her college up, honestly. And I know y'all got, I was looking, y'all got your final preliminary budgets meeting Friday.
Russ? It's starting the final.
Starting the final, okay. And that's a problem because of where we are, where, I mean, y'all are trying to figure out budget, I understand that. So, that kind of, y'all don't know what you're going to be able to do next year yet and that kind of puts y'all in a bind too and I understand that, but it's kind of put me in one too a little bit. So, first question is, I need to stay, I need to figure out exactly what the salary schedule is at. I'd asked it, it'd be at least 1350 regardless of whether it's part-time or full-time. And if we're going to put it on skid, on a salary scale, it'd probably be 14. And then, whether y'all would consider making it full-time or not at this point, or whether we're going to wait. If you wait, we'll see what happens as far as my ability to be able to hire somebody.
I forgot my salary scale. Do you have any?
I don't have the full sound schedule, but I did pull up the re, the sheet where we reevaluated and moved all of those positions to a four in, I think, 2016.
Okay. Well, don't let me stop you from...
I got it right here, I can correct.
I will restate my statement to the prior agenda item that falls in the same category and I appreciate the judge's recognition of that, that we are in the middle of the budget process and we are in the middle of looking at the budget. It's not that I'm necessarily opposed to any of this, it's just we haven't figured out what our numbers look like for next year. And I would urge the court to have that discussion on Friday rather than take a vote on this today.
But you're, and that's fine. Judge, your bottom line is though, to have us consider taking your requested position to full-time?
Yes.
And is that immediately?
I would like it immediately because then I could go ahead and fill it right now, fill the part-time position without having to worry about whether, you know...
And your request is a minimum of 1350. Does that fit into the salary scale where we have court?
For what, grade, grade four, grade two?
I don't know.
He was saying same as the others and that would be a grade four, so that would make the minimum paid.
But I think the court approved the clerk two at $12 an hour.
It did.
Okay.
It did.
And in that 12, if you decide to keep it part-time, the range is from 12 dollars to 15 dollars.
In district, office, county clerk's office.
So, you could do the 1350.
Say that again, please.
The range for grade two is 12 to 15 dollars, with 1620 being the maximum.
That's with longevity?
That's with longevity. And so, if you chose to keep part-time, you could raise the salary from 12 dollars an hour to the 1350 an hour and still stay in the range.
I'd even considered if we stayed part-time, I'd probably go out pirating other people's employee, like see if I could get Cory to quit John Christopher and retire and come to work with me part-time.
Good luck. There's a 90-day waiting period when they're...
If I could get Cory, I'd take a 90-day waiting period.
The question for me was the responsibilities, what did the job description of a clerk two versus the job description of a clerk four? Because that's what it's based on.
The general description for a grade two, general admin, office positions must be able to perform basic clerical duties. Example, make copies, process repetitive, similar transactions and filing. Non-office position must be able to perform basic building maintenance. So, we have two different classes, two different things in there. Okay, for a class four, or grade level four, general admin, office positions must be able to perform grade three duties plus higher-level financial legal responsibility. Prepare reconciliations, legal letters, documents for court. Responsible for state-issued inventory. Office manager at this level oversees employees up to grade four. And that's it for all office positions. You want to know what grade three covers?
Yes.
Grade three must be able to perform level two duties and have added financial responsibility. Balance cash drawers, make deposits, or position requires Spanish, English, bilingual employee.
So, that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I agree. And honestly, I hadn't looked precisely at it. We were just looking at what level, like for example, the DA's office clerk staff was at and balancing it on that because we're looking at something, if it goes, if it's a full-time equivalent to what they're doing. Most of the job would be answering phones, talking to lawyers and legal assistants, scheduling hearings, helping schedule hearings, doing data entry.
So, based on what you just heard, are you looking for a two, three, or four?
Three. I think three is where I'm at. Because I don't see the position supervising anybody. I don't see them having to deal with inventory or anything like that. We don't handle any money, so there's not any financial dealing with that. It's just mainly dealing with the legal process, understanding, I need somebody that's smart enough to understand what are the steps in a family law case and what's the next step we do and, you know, what kind of hearing are we going to set? I don't expect them to come in knowing that, but I need somebody who's capable of learning it relatively quickly to know that, you know, once you file an original petition, we need to have a TRO hearing and once we have a TRO hearing, we need to have a pre-trial and scheduling orders and understand what all that means.
Sure.
And not only for family law, but for probate and military and criminal and all the different types of things we handle.
So, on the grade three starts at 13?
Yes.
Goes to what, please?
1625.
That's with the longevity, so...
Longevity could be 1745.
1745, okay.
Originally, when they asked for this part-time position, it was mainly just to answer phone calls and reply to emails. So, obviously, you've thought more about it and...
What is, what changed was, we talked about it, we came in here, talked about it before we even started really considering next year's budget. And at that point, we were going to try to have, we need a part-time person, we're going to have a court reporter, still the plan on using a full-time court reporter, who hopefully could also do some careful...
Right.
What we found out is that just isn't working.
That's what you're thinking.
Yeah. And so, then when I had to go back and reevaluate, okay, let's do away with a full-time court reporter, continue to contract, independent contractors and court reporters. That frees up quite a bit of money, actually. Make this part-time clerk do a little bit more, do some more work and make them full-time. So, that was the idea. We'll get rid of this 80-something thousand dollar a year job, let's load, let's move it to a lower position, it'll be a full-time clerk.
One of the other things that we were anticipating is that the new case management software that we're under, that the clerk's office would be able to enter the bonds and those types of things that I'm responsible for managing right now. And then, we'd be able to pull up the cases, set on the information, individuals' addresses, although that would already be in there. What we've learned is that it does not have that capabilities at all. So, I'm still responsible to enter all of the information after the initial pull of the case, which is just your basic information, and keeping all of the files updated myself. So, when you first get a criminal case, all you've got is the complaint and information. You don't have the defendant's address, you don't have a bondsman, you don't know who you need to notice. If any attorney enters the case, you've got to enter that later. Same throughout all of the cases. So, the data entry that we thought was going to go away has not, it's, it's all still there the way it is.
The software we're using is, at least at this point, woefully inadequate, but it's what everybody seems to want to use, but it's really, quite honestly, sucks.
The LGS?
Yeah. So far, they keep making promises, but I feel they haven't lived up to the goal.
So, we still got, you know, multiple offices entering the same information. That did not go away.
Great question. So, bottom line, you're looking at a grade three, full-time.
Yes.
The starting pay of that is $13 an hour?
And I was asking for 1350.
Okay. And that would, that would, based on the applicant's qualifications and skills, would determine that and your judgment?
Correct.
So, what does that do to your applicant pool, Lucy?
I'll just keep adding to it. If I'm going to get they just, if you decide to change it to a part-time, from a part-time to a full-time, we'll repost that position.
Okay.
And as I get the applicants in, I will...
Judge, we'll have this discussion on Friday in our budget workshop. All right, sir?
That's good for me.
We can't give you an answer at this time.
Oh, no, I didn't think that. When I saw y'all were doing that Friday, the first thing that popped in my head, so I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
When you do have that discussion on Friday, would you consider an advertising budget since we have not had much response, so that we can actually get it advertised somewhere besides just on the website?
Doesn't Lucy have an advertising budget for that?
No.
I would think she'd be the one that should have the advertising budget.
Probably should. I did run for, I mean, put them on the feed or some of those websites that...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to table that until after our workshop discussions. Agenda item number 15, road and bridge engineer, Harry Walker, consider and consideration of possible approval for renewal of Apache Corporation special road use permit for County Road 126, attachment number 15.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is Apache's first renewal of their road use permit. They are operating on County Road 126, in the process of building a well up there. We just approved a pipeline permit last time. They're also, they're re-putting in. They're just continuing with the work they need to do and recommending approval at this time.
Okay, this is County Road 128 and County Road 126?
Yes, the route goes from 39, 128 to 126.
Okay. I move to approve the renewal of Apache Corporation's special road use permit for County Road 128 and 126, second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item 16, consideration and approval of renewal of the special road use agreement for Magellan, strike on various roads, attachment number 16.
This is the third renewal for strike, who is building, strike's the contractor building the Magellan pipeline. They have, I think there are probably 15 different roads included in their permit and their routes. We have had our issues with strike. We did have a meeting with them recently, Commissioner Cox, Mr. Dobianski, and myself. And they are promising to prove that over, take care, take better care of the roads, trying to correct the behavior of some of their drivers. They have also, in their defense, they have been good about reimbursing us for damages on the roads. We just received another large check from them, 118,000 and some odd dollars. So, they are at least taking responsibility for the damages they're doing. So, we are recommending that their renewal be granted. Hopefully, it will be done for the same damage.
Even though they're paying for the damages, I don't know if the correct term is pain and suffering for your department, because as you're having to go back and redo what they tear up, that's taking you from other items or other areas or other projects you have on.
It does, but in calculating the damages, we are charging them not only for the materials... It does, but in, in calculating the damages, we are charging them not only for the materials, but also the labor equipment to put it on the roads.
Okay.
So, we feel like they're making us whole, uh, they're not paying for the asthma and for the headaches that they generate, but, uh, they are paying for the labor equipment.
Okay. I didn't know, if you need to take them to lunch with John C., and let them know, just to let them know.
We, well, we, we're letting them know, we've had a couple of, kind of Jesus meetings with them, um, over the course of the project, and they, they generally correct their behavior. Uh, the, the biggest issue we have, aside from the fact that they were working through a very wet winter, uh, they bring in different subcontractors from time to time, and a lot of times, there's a learning curve for those folks, um, staying on the proper routes, and just behaving in a, you know, driving in courteous manner, and being respectful of the other drivers up the road.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that they're, they're taking, they're, they're covering their damage, because we just approved almost a three-hundred-thousand-dollar contract for a contractor to come in and do roads, and, you know, and that's to get that done, but the thought of these guys putting you behind, or these companies putting you behind on your schedule, is a concern.
Well, it is, I mean, it is a burden on Rhodes Bridge, um, you know, we never know when a project like this is coming up.
Correct.
Um, and what kind of impact it's gonna have, for, for example, Apache, the permit you just renewed, uh, they're a very short route, they've been, you know, pretty little rock there. Uh, Magellan is a totally different animal, we've gone all the way across the county, and they've been out there for nine months or so now, um, you know, and through the, you know, some of the worst weather conditions we've had in a long time. Uh, there's no way to assess that going into these things?
Sure.
So it just, it, just one of those things we, we just have to deal with.
I mean, if it makes you, if, if it makes you feel any better, Judge, I mean, we have had a couple of pretty serious meetings with, with the strike and with Magellan, and, uh, as of late, their behavior has been a lot more courteous. Um, it's not to say that they have big loads and big trucks...
Sure.
...that we're going down county roads with, but they have brought in a pretty sizable check recently to help offset some of those expenses.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, I just, because we had a, a Mary Jarvis that made comments in, in public comments this morning about her road conditions and everything, and part of it is we're having to go and repair these roads, even though they're paying for them, that's taken your crews from some of the other people, and I can understand their heartburn, so I just...
And that's correct, you know, everything that comes along like this, where it's something that's essentially out of our control.
Right.
Uh, we don't really have the legal right to tell them, no, you can't build a pipeline across the county, uh, we just have to try and manage it as best we can, but it does impact our other operations.
Sure.
That's just a given.
I, I think in the future, we might need to look at, like, the pipeline companies that are coming through, to have them actually pay a contractor to do the repairs, instead of having our crews on that. Energy Transfer actually said that they were gonna do that on County Road 215, when I first started talking to them, when they were redoing that plan out there, they said they were gonna use a contractor that worked in the yard to do that, and when we got to the end of the, of the program, they didn't do it, and we're in the process right now of getting the money from them, uh, because they asked for a bill the other day. And, uh, we have gotten money from Atmos Energy, who tore up 215 in December, uh, they were working in real wet conditions and tore the ditch up, and we figured the labor in the, in the base that we put out there, we've got money, gotten money from them. But I think, seriously, if we have a very large project coming to the county, I think we need to sit down with them and see if they're minimal to do that, because it would give our guys the time to take care of the roads that we need to be taking care of, instead of going back and patching the roads that they're tearing up.
And, and that's certainly a possibility, we could look at next time around, you know, I know we have another large pipeline project scheduled for next year.
Right.
Uh, this Plains Pipeline is supposed to start in January, um, you know, a lot of it depends on the routing and the alignment, too, and we completed the Enterprise Pipeline, um, which was about half the length of Magellans, uh, with barely a ripper. I mean, they were great, they took better care of the roads, and they were, their timing was better, that part of the county, uh, the road system is a little more, you know, receptive to that kind of work, uh, so things worked out really well, and we hardly had a call about those folks, and they were in and out very quickly.
Sure.
These plains can be like that, they're following the same alignment, hopefully they are, but a, a lot of it depends on what contractor they hire, when they do the work, what's the weather at the times. There are options we could, we could look at, you know, in the future.
Well, I know you guys catch a lot of arrows, and I'm just trying to put a shield up, maybe deflect some of them, so, okay.
Judge, if there's no other, no other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve a renewal of the special road use agreement from Magellan Strike on the county roads listed in the, in the permit.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number sixteen by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dubianski, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number seventeen, consideration of possible approval of inter-local agreement with various towns related to GLO, CBG, Hurricane Harvey Grant Program, attachment number seventeen. Mr. Walker, that's still your arena?
Commissioner, this is a package of inter-local agreements, um, we have Todd Mission, Iowa and Bedeys, uh, all have the same agreement, uh, it's drafted by grant work related to, um, the, the CBG, GLO, Hurricane Harvey funding. Even though we have inter-local agreements already in place with these towns, these agreements are specific to the needs of these Hurricane Harvey projects, uh, probably the biggest difference between, uh, these inter-local agreements and our standard inter-local agreements is that, uh, the towns, we will be doing the construction work on these projects for the towns, they will pay us not only the materials that they normally do when we do this type of work in town, but they're also going to be paying us for the labor and equipment associated with that. So, uh, that's a key feature, and, uh, it's the primary difference between what's in our standard inter-local agreement. There will also be, I believe, in the future, a companion inter-local agreement with the town of Anderson, um, they're struggling a little bit in getting their paperwork and everything in order, so they're running a little behind the other towns. We do have a representative here from Todd Mission in case you'd like to grill him.
Thank you for being here, Neil.
There's no discussion, I move to approve, uh, the inter-local agreements with the town of Iowa, Todd Mission, and Bedeys for the GLO, CBG, Hurricane Harvey Grant Program. Second. I think my left ear is better than my right, so I'm gonna take, take Commissioner Dubianski. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seventeen by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dubianski, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Roden Bridge Report, Sheriff.
Thank you. Uh, crews are busy, we're continuing to haul a lot of rock, um, we're getting prepared for the start of painting, we may be ready to start some of our chip sealing work as early as next week, uh, trying to get a few things wrapped up, uh, so everybody's really busy right now. A couple of related items, or unusual items, we are continuing to haul broken concrete from Navis Underkinger High School, uh, this is donated material from some of the, the building improvements they're gonna be making over there, uh, and also, we are currently hauling rat material donated by Tech Stop, uh, from a location up in Palm Station. The Tech Stop, I'll point out, in the past, we've gotten typically twelve-hundred yards of rat material from them every year. This year, they came back and added an extra thousand yards, uh, to that amount, so we've quite a bit of rat from them, which is great.
Good.
Uh, but we do have to load and haul it, so that's going on right now. Started yesterday, will continue today, and probably lap into tomorrow, doing that, so it's, we're doing that with our crews and, and some of our contract haulers. Elsewhere, again, we'll continue to work with theme on the grant projects, as you just saw. Uh, I did meet with, uh, consultants for Iowa and Bedeys yesterday, regarding their projects, just going over those, and that's, that process is continuing on. And also, I was glad to see, uh, we did have contact from the GLO, uh, this week, uh, regarding the twenty sixteen grant, which we notified back in January that we've been approving for. We still haven't seen the contract, uh, they did contact us to get some additional paperwork that they need for that file, uh, so that is still moving along, although it's been quite slow.
That's only three years ago.
Well, we're still trying to collect some of the money from twenty fifteen, I believe, too, so that's, we, we won't, we won't go there. But, yeah, it, it takes time, uh, I know they have had some, some personnel issues, turnover at the GLO, I think that's impacted their production rates and some of their work. Any questions? I'm trying to answer them.
I don't see, uh, the striping for out here, is that...
They are scheduled to come in Sunday night this weekend.
Yes, sir.
And he thinks they can get that complete one day, one night, uh, but they may, if things don't go smoothly, they may come back Monday night and finish up.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, sir. Agenda item number eighteen, County Judge Joe Fowth, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize County Judge's signatory. Uh, my recommendation and review from the Forest Service that we take no action at this time, any objections to that? Hearing none, we'll leave it in, leave the, no, the, we'll leave it as it is, I said. Agenda item number nineteen, receive any updates on the strategic plan. Anybody have anything? Commissioner Mallett, can you, do you have any update on, uh, T-GAL?
Uh, they're working on construction drawings right now, we met with the, uh, Jail Standards Commission, uh, and, and what we need to do in order to have inmates transported, because it's gonna be actually attached to the jail.
Right.
So, uh, and all that went pretty well, and they're trying to expedite, uh, that to, to get it out there pretty quick, so...
Okay. Do you have a target date?
I see.
Bachelor, about giving that?
Like I said, a lot of it kind of depends on what, uh, the feedback we get from the jail standards commission, so...
All right, thank you. Agenda item number twenty, discussion and possible action to authorize the sale of county-owned property on FM twenty-four, forty-five, and on Natures Avenue in Iowa. It is expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding real property. Mr. Walker, is it, yes, ma'am?
Before you go into executive session, could we have the signing of this contract?
Which contract?
The FI contract.
I thought we, oh, yeah, we can.
It's been a lot going on.
There's been a lot going on. Sure. Those of you that need signatures, if you'd like to come to the table, get your signatures. Uh, Mr. Walker, is it your recommendation that we go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Fowth?
I don't know anything about it, do you need me?
I would like to have you here for our discussion, please.
All right.
So if you will stay, I'd appreciate it.
We're gonna give it, this count on these.